Thank you all for coming to the Grant Facilities Town Hall. So this has been quite a journey with all of the proposed construction. Oh, I had that so set up.
I know, but I moved it so you could be seen.
Okay. So we've had all the, you know, the design work that we've been doing for the last two and a half, three years on the new construction, which consisted of, you know, this building being the new library media center and also the early learning alignment and then also the historic garden refresher renovation. So all of that was exciting. It got kind of shelved a little bit for a little while, it sounded like. Then we had weather, lots and lots of weather on very old buildings, 35-year-old buildings. So the weather wasn't too kind to those buildings and it really laid bare some of the, just the inefficiencies or the, they're decrepit, let's put it that way. I don't know how else to say it. It's late, so I'm just gonna use words I know. So they're just not in great shape. So, and so we had some advocacy from our community and ideas that were sort of put together. Team from the district came down, worked with teachers, teachers' union, administration, talked a lot about it. We had other meetings and there were board meetings and, you know, for those of you that checked into board meetings and you were able to kind of see that discussion as well with regards to what we're gonna do about those bungalows. So the facilities department in conjunction with the, you know, with, well, administration, came up with some options. Then options went out to the community. You were able to see three options. In those options, and I'm gonna steal your thunder, Carrie here, so I won't get too deep into anything, but out of those options, it sounds like just over the last week or so, there's been an evolution in at least one of those options. So that's gonna be talked about this evening. I believe this is gonna be an opportunity for people to ask questions, provide comments. I will say before I turn it over, I appreciate how the Grant community came together during this time, worked collaboratively in a very sort of, quite frankly, a very emotional kind of thing. You know, this is an emotional environment when we're talking about classroom spaces, kids and teachers in classrooms and everybody's safety, but also their comfort, right? And if people don't feel safe, then they're just not safe, right? We want them to feel safe as well. So with that said, thank you to the entire community for coming together on this. And I want to appreciate the board right now for moving on, getting, fast-tracking our design for our new classroom building. It's a beautiful conceptual drawing that Johnson Favaro has put together over the last few years or so with the site team. It may not look like that in the end, we know that, but it looks beautiful now. So we appreciate that and we're really looking forward to the future of Grant. This school right here, I'm gonna tell you right here, this school here, this is the gem of the district. I'm biased, I'm the principal of the school, but I have an amazing staff and we have an amazing community here. And, you know, don't tell too many people, we don't want too many people breaking down the door here to get in here, but this is an amazing school. So we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do what we can to like improve the facility. So with that, I'm gonna turn over to Carrie Upton and he will go through all the options and run the show here.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Carrie Upton, Chief Operations Officer. I've seen him know most of you all along the way. Thank you for being here. So I'll tell you a little bit about where we are in our process and where, and then some things that we might do, we'll go through a couple of options. And this is where I should be sharing ice cream, give me just a second. Do that before I walk into the place. Okay, perfect. So, you know, I a lot of times say, we are involved in a process and the process has lots of steps and can be changed and a lot of things happen and we are responsive to the process, but everything moves along in its way and there are many, many factors. And while you're going through a process, we have 15 other schools that are also in a process. So a lot of things are happening at the same time. So it was determined with the Measure SMS funds that we would start here with doing the library and doing the early childhood updating and also do your historic courtyard. Also along the way, Mirror Smash, we learned that the problems that we knew were there but didn't think were as bad were much worse than they were and so that's why we needed to close that school while we rewrapped that building and make it watertight. And some of you might even come from Mirror Smash. That process is moving along. We anticipate having somebody move back there in 2025. We're still waiting to see which group and who moves back, but in August of 2025, we've decided not to move in the middle of the school. It should be ready in January '25. We're gonna go ahead and plan for August because that allows us to not move people in the middle of the year. I'm gonna lose this again because I see that. Okay, all right. So along the way also, when we were going through the process, one of the things that we knew was that we didn't have enough funds in SMS to do all of the projects, but back in the fall, we said, let's not pick which one, let's see which one, if any of them drop out for any reason, for things to drop out. Sadly, the Grant Library project did get held up with Division of State Architects. Now, everything we do gets approved by the Division of State Architects and the Division of State Architects is being more cautious or aggressive when it comes to any work on older buildings. They wanna make sure completely that all the seismic and everything else is done. And so as we were going into the process with this, they did a seismic review, an early seismic review, and one of the things that they requested was the challenge with modernizing this building, which was built, so we have a building over there that was built, you know, in 1934, that we're trying, that's connected to this building, which was built in 1955. And then you have a bunch of awnings that were added at different other periods. Well, that whole experience gave the Division of State Architects a little bit of heartburn and so they've asked us to go in and do some rather substantial testing that couldn't be done during the school year to prove up that this building, what these buildings need to be seismically strong. So that work is planned for this summer. And so we're moving on with some other projects that are starting this summer, that work will happen this summer. Our hope is that we will be able to start this project in the summer of '24. Now, we're still working on that and a little bit is gonna depend on if we go out for a bond in March. If that bond passes, if we decide to go out in November, we might still be able to start in the summer. There's a lot of factors that are involved and we're gonna work with the board on that. I just wanted to acknowledge Alicia Magano, our board member who's here. You've probably come from a long day of interviews, haven't you, of superintendent interviews?
Yes, but of course this meeting is super important and I wanna be here to.
Yeah, I wanna be here.
Yeah. So our goal and our plan is we'll get all of this wrapped up with the Division of State Architects, what they need to know, and then we'll be able to start construction. Doing this project, the library, the early childhood project, which is really important because in 2025, we're gonna need more transitional kindergarten rooms as we go to full TK for all four-year-olds, it's important to get going on that. If we aren't able to start in '24, I didn't write this down, Michael, Jim, when would we finish each of these projects if we start in August of '24?
I think it's 10 or 12 months.
Yeah. So I think it's about a year. So we'd have that done in about a year. The other thing that's happened is the board has, so, so this would sort of set us up that we should be able to move in fall of '25 for the library and the central garden and then winter of '25 for the early childhood. We'll see if we can move that along, but those are the plans right now to get those two projects done. And then the new building, the new classroom building, the board went ahead and approved, going ahead and starting the design on that building along with a couple of others in the district, saying that these are the priorities in the new bond. So when the new bond passes, this will be one of the first projects that is done. We will be able to, we need to start that in a summer. With timing for design and everything, we would plan to start that the summer of '25 and then we would complete that. We think we might be able to be ready to move in January of '27, which is about four or five months, six months earlier than we thought would be done. So that's our current schedule, though I will say once again, these are all schedules and anything can mess them up, but, you know, or delay them, but this is where we are with the plan. So we would be able to do a transitional move over the winter break. What that means is that the existing bungalows, oh, let me say that for this project, one of the things we would be adding is another bungalow for the library. And that's a special bungalow that's specially reinforced and can support books. And that would be your temporary library during your one year that we're in construction. So we'd add that before we go into, so we'd add that before we go into construction and it'd be used for the library for that one year. So as you know, so this is what our, you know, existing campus looks like. Let me try to move. I'm gonna get out of the camera, but I'll move over here, but hopefully there will still be the video. So as you know, and one of the things that we're looking at though are these six bungalows, which have been here for a long time. They are not scheduled to be removed until we finish the classroom building. So if we finish that in, you know, and we're able to open up in January, we could potentially make them go that spring or we could wait till the summer, it's a little easier for everything, but they're not planned to be moved until that time. And there is some concern that they need a lot more care or they need to be replaced if we're gonna get to that. They're not, their expiration date might have passed. So the questions are, so we have one option and that is where we go in and we refurbish all six of them. This is work that we can, that can be done, a lot of it can be done in the summer, a little bit can be done in the fall. What that would be is we'd go in and change out the floors, probably change out the floorboards, we would change out the ceiling tiles, the whole grid, you know, refill the whole grid, we'd fix all of the exteriors around, we do work on the HVAC system, we do new ramps and we just clean up the whole thing. So this is one way. The good thing about this is we would get it done more quickly than some of the other options. It costs less money than some of the other options and so we could get in there, but it does mean we have these same existing bungalows and we'd have them for the next three and a half years. Another option is what we can do is with the Division of State Architects, we can go over the counter and get four replacement bungalows, not five, not six, but up to four. So we cannot replace all six bungalows quickly. So if we were to go.
Why?
Because the Division of State Architects requires, you can only do four over the counter and if we were to do it over the counter, if we could get it done by the early fall, if we have to go through a whole process, it's six months or more that sits for them to approve anything more than four.
And can you do four and then start the process to get the other two replaced simultaneously?
We think there is a way to do that if we combine it with the other, with the other project, with the construction project, but we have to look at, they don't like splitting things up much, so we have to figure out how we finesse that to make that work. We could though always bring in the library early. We were planning to bring it in this summer in preparation for the work this summer. We deferred that, we could bring that one in in the fall. So one choice is we would come in and we'd replace four of the bungalows and we would refurbish one or two bungalows and then drop the library bungalow. I think I have the wrong plan.
No, that's right.
Is this the right one? Okay. Because we'd just drop in the new one. So that would be, that's one way to get it. Now, the challenges with this is we still have to go through the Division of State Architects, we still have to procure this, we have to get a contractor to do it, there is going to be work. This would be, we probably would not be able to start this until the early fall. We have checked with availability of the bungalows and while there is one company that might be able to get them to us earlier than school, you know, than the beginning of school, the challenge is we can't get all the other work done with the Division of State Architects approval and the contractor approval in time to get it done. So it would be happening sometime over the fall. So we'd need to empty out these classrooms while we swapped them out. We'd probably have to do it in parts and pieces. So there would be moving into other places while that happens. It would be, mean there's work on campus while, you know, everything's happening. There would be days where we would have to close down the playground, play yard entirely because we'd be moving heavy objects. We can't pull this off just on Saturdays and can't do anything on Sundays here in Santa Monica. So it would be, so these are the factors, but that means that we would be able to replace these and have them replaced by mid to late fall. There's a lot of work that's involved in replacing them and we have to go in, we have to salvage and take everything, we have to take all the furniture out, we have to salvage and take sort of all the technology out. Then these things are taken apart, they're sort of two trailers, they get hauled off, we'll have to do some site work to make sure that the site underneath it is still stable and code has changed in the last 30 years, so there might be things that Division of State Architects requires. Then we bring in the new ones, they have to be joined and put together and then we have to do all of the finishes, including all the technology that has to go back in. So fire alarm and data and all, you know, all classroom technology, all of that has to be put back in before we can use them. And the ramps are a whole nother thing that's done a separate project number at the same time. So all of those pieces have to go to bring these in, so that's another option. Yes?
Just clarification, those are gonna be new or refurbished?
Most likely they will be refurbished, there's a chance they might be new, we're still talking to the vendor on this. It's gonna depend a little bit on our timing and depending a little bit on availability. The challenge is with, is that right now because of the expansion of TK, they're putting in more portables this year than like they ever have because across the whole state, everybody's having to ramp up for the new TK. So there's not as much availability as there would on a normal year B, but they would have been factory refurbished or there is a chance we might be able to get some new, we're still talking to the vendors about that. Yes?
When you say days that the playground may have to be shut down, do you have any estimation? Is that like a few days? Could it be like weeks of when?
It would be, it would be a period of a few days, two or three or four times.
Okay.
So it would, you know, so like for two or three days would be the time, you know, that they're taking them out. So we have all the big equipment sort of coming in, putting them on trailers and hauling them out. Then there'd be work on the site, then there'd be another two or three days where they're bringing the new ones in. And if we did it in one parts, which means we cleared out four classrooms at one time to do this, it would be two sets probably. If we did it in two parts, we did two and two, so because we don't have availability for other spaces, or if we do the library at a different time because we go with a different company, it might be more different. These are all factors that are gonna be involved. Because if we get the, you know, if it's the same company, we might be able to do, we already have the library on, it's already ready, it's ready for us, but the other two are.
I'll give you a fair statement.
I know you haven't talked about option three, but do any of these options more impact negatively the ability of the permanent classroom to be constructed, given that this option two provides a more, you know, long-lived bungalow option than option one, for example? Do any of these negatively impact the likely construction success of the permanent classroom subject?
No. No. These bungalows were intended to stay in their location while the construction occurred and so it doesn't impact it. It is money. I mean, there is, you know, on the overall big picture, this costs more money than.
I guess my question, if this costs more money, is that gonna take away from the other permanent classroom?
It will not take away from your permanent classroom, it might take away from something in the bond in the back yet. So there might have been a something else that y'all might have got, that Grant might have gotten, that will be, will have spent the money before we get there.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Carrie? Yes?
Okay, real, just quick on that, I mean, as a parent, I commented on this at the school board meeting, I remember when these bungalows went in when I was a student here in the eighties. And the fact that they're still here and we haven't had a town hall because parents are up in arms about kids being in buildings that I was in is a big rule. You know, the idea that Grant kids are gonna lose out of other things they potentially would have gotten because of deferred and frankly negligent maintenance on the district's behalf, that's not fair. Like because we have crappy bungalows that nobody's taking care of or replaced, why should our kids lose out on other things that we carved a plan? I mean, that's, that's not fair.
I don't think, I don't think that's the way.
There's fancy buildings in middle school, there's fancy buildings at the high school, the district just built itself a fancy new headquarters. Why should our kids lose because basic maintenance wasn't done?
So I don't think that's the way Carrie meant it. What he's saying is if we're spending several hundred thousand dollars on this, it's several hundred thousand that won't be somewhere else. Might be from Grant, we don't know what the tail-end projects are gonna be anyway, but I think the question Carrie was actually answering was, yes, we are going to be spending money on this and that means that money won't be spent on some other projects, whether it's here or anywhere else. And it wasn't to, we're taking away something if you get this. Correct, Carrie? I mean, that's not at all what you were saying. That is correct, it's not specifically here, it's the, it's just the overall point. Sure. But in response to a few things you said, starting with Measure BB, then Measure ES and Measure SMS and all of these, the discussion has been about removing bungalows. We know that. And in each of those, the board and the district, the community decided to put, focus on other things. BB became much more about middle schools and high schools and BB became about replacing Edison. When it came time for us to do ES, we had a long discussion with the superintendent and everyone and it was a question, we've been saying about bungalows, should we go in to do the bungalows right away? And one of the decisions was on the elementary and middle schools was that we needed to touch every classroom because every classroom really looked bad across the district. So we spent the money doing the window paint floor project, which then morphed into the window paint floor air conditioning project. So that took up all of the funds to do bungalow replacement. And so with SMS, we finished up the air conditioning and the idea was let's do that. And if we'd gotten a little more ahead of it, about four years ago, we would have gotten things, but various things happened. Historic resources, COVID, which delayed things and with every delay, there's less money. In regards to the new district office, that money comes from a completely different fund, it's not the same fund as the bond and it's not the same fund that would have been spent on schools. So there's different funding to support that and it's part of a long-range plan we have to actually bring more money into the district. So you need to understand that's a different animal than this is.
Can you, just because there is, I think, a lot like a perception in the community that there's real concern that district money, tax dollars, people who live in this community is going to, as Val said, a fancy district headquarters. You've sort of touched on it, this is like a different fund. Can you clarify what you mean by that and why those dollars aren't going to classrooms for kids?
Sure. It's coming from some RDA funds that we can spend on these particular things and where we're, and while the fund is coming from that, we're making revenue off of that property and off of the old existing property that actually pays back the COP for it. So actually we'll then end up not using, it came from redevelopment, but it wound up not being from redevelopment. So it's funds that we're making on our property that allows us to do this, which then allows us in the end to make more money for the district using our properties. I can't talk completely about that because a lot of that is sort of real estate issues that still have, or because of the negotiation, there are types of things I can't talk about. But it is a plan that we have, I mean, I'm not trying to hide anything, I'm just trying to say, you know, we, to appropriately place the district in a place to negotiate these deals, we can't be as open about some of them, but it is to, it's all intended to keep bringing more, more funds into the district.
And are these documents that like evidence whatever this agreement is that you're supposed to be reaching, are those gonna be publicly available?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, as things, as things keep getting made, they're publicly available, it's just when we're still in a negotiation situation, we can't.
Because I think it's a question.
Because we have to, we have to negotiate the best deal for the district.
Of course.
It's a question of optics, right? Like, we've lived in, some of us have lived in Santa Monica for decades, the district comes with its hands out, head with its hat and says, give us money, we're gonna fix the bungalows, over and over and over. And you see beautiful buildings at the middle school and the high school. We see bathrooms here that haven't been touched since the eighties. We see bungalows with piles falling from the roofs, water coming in from the ceilings, kids with mysterious colds that happen only of distrust and frustration because, like Jen said, like where is our money going? Why are our kids at this level not getting what they need? I mean, our campus is at the elementary school level, maybe not Edison, but they're falling apart and it doesn't seem like anybody is listening. Seems like the district got hundreds of millions of dollars in bond funds and we don't have it. I mean, nothing is, I mean, maybe we got paints and some air conditioning, but we don't have, we don't have moves at work. And there's a big optics problem here and maybe it's a lack of transparency, but if there are, if you can't take money from whatever was used to pay for the headquarters and pay for the elementary school, that needs to be explained. If you couldn't have used money to, that was used to build the giant discovery building at the high school or the performing arts center at the middle school to make the elementary schools habitable, why, you know, that's something the community needs to understand because for those of us who just have kids at this level, we look around and say, where is our tax money going?
And decisions were made to focus more on the high school and the middle schools. That's, I mean, I just, I just have to say that, I mean, that was lots of meetings, lots of discussions with board, with everyone and part of the thing is, you know, one of the things everyone says is that all the students matriculate up to the middles and up to the high schools, so there was a decision to focus there. I wasn't there for some of that, but yes.
But since Water Intrusion closed Smash Mirror.
Yes.
And evacuated everyone out.
Yes.
And they got bungalows actually for some of, for one of the rooms, right, to move the children out immediately. Pretty sure during COVID, right, they, there was bungalows in the yard there at Los Amigos.
They were already there. They were already there. You're right, but they were there already.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing new.
So, but in that instance, the whole thing gets shut down, everyone gets moved, right? It's a big thing. We're talking about four bungalows, essentially six, but, but four used as, you know, children in there six hours a day, teachers in there eight hours a day for 30 years, some of them going through multiple pregnancies. We're not talking about a lot. How is it we closed the whole school down, redirect all funds to get on that immediately? I understand it impacts the entire school, but here, we're just asking for this tiny bit. Why, why are we not evacuating those classrooms right now and finding another position for them if it's not safe to be in there?
It is safe to be in those rooms. There's nothing showing scientifically with our evidence and what we've looked at that says it is unsafe to be in those rooms. We are hearing though that those rooms, and I wanna say it's not just at Grant, we have 52 bungalows spread across the district. Many of them are just as old and just as in bad shape and we have deferred those. I mean, and the construction projects at McKinley and Rogers are there to replace bungalows, but they will be in those bungalows for two to three years. The projects that were approved are to replace bungalows at Roosevelt. Those, they'll still be there for three to four years. So we have, it's not just here, it is a decision that was made, you know, where to put priorities because there are only so much time and money to do it, but that's where it was. I would say that the hope and desire was that these bungalows would last all the way through until we could replace, but we're running low on it and that's not true, so that's why we're coming to you with plans to do a replacement.
And if I could just add to that, it's, it's not the decisions made a year ago, four years ago, whichever, when these bonds were going in. These teachers are pivoting every day, there needs to be a pivot right now. There needs to be a new plan, a new decision, new funds. It needs to be fixed, our students need it for this fall.
Okay. And we are here pivoting. We are here responding. And we're telling you what can be done, given the rules that we have for school construction. Okay? So we're telling, we're, it's like I'm not saying, oh, we're gonna put this off and do this in another two or three years. We're literally telling you, we're trying to move as quickly as we can, but we can't move more, we cannot drop some, we can't replace these in the summer. It's not possible with the rules that we have from the Division of State Architects and public construction code. It's just not possible. I mean, we have to follow these laws. So these laws and these rules and it's just, so we're doing what we can and that's why we're giving you these options. Yes, sir.
Do you have a third option? I believe there was three options, maybe we can go to that one and then we can discuss how the community sort of wants to move forward?
Right. The third option is we would come in in the summer of '24 and we would replace all six bungalows and drop the library bungalow. The benefit of this is it happens in the summer, it doesn't happen when, you know, we can do all six because we have the time for the six months or more that it has to go through the Division of State Architects. And we would probably get newer bungalows than the ones that would be the refurbished ones we'd put into the fall. That's not completely true, we were still working out the details, but we would certainly be in the line to get the newer ones with these companies if we asked now. There is another option that was asked for, which is we come in and we do a refurbish of these six this summer and then we would come in in the summer of '24 and remove them. So it would be the same refurbished plan we talked about and then we do a full removal and replacement in the summer of '24. Those are the four options. The fourth option is the most expensive, the first option is the least expensive and then the other two sit in the middle. We don't have exact numbers because there's a lot of factors involved, but, you know, option one is somewhere between. option one is somewhere between 150 and 450,000. Option four probably is well over a million to a million five.
Can you confirm, so for all four options, no new bonds need to be passed? The money was existing. We don't have to wait until something is passed in order to implement?
To do this replacement, we won't be able to make this happen. To build your new building, a bond will need to be passed.
There's a question on the screen. Is it possible to do that one as well?
You want me to, Rachel? Yes.
When you talk about refurbishing, what does that look like? Because I did notice it said, well, we'll assess the carpet and we'll assess certain things. My shelves for my bookcases don't stay up anymore. My drawers that are there don't close correctly anymore. There's tears through the carpet, I guess, from furniture being dragged across it at some point in time. So the windows, we get lots of fun critters and things crawl, little eight-legged friends crawling through. So are you gonna like gut these and redo them? I mean, my sink is stopped up right now. I just put a work order in for. So when you say refurbish, are we gonna gut them, put in new shelves, new drawers, new sink, new windows?
New plumbing.
Yeah. Or are we gonna just paint and clean them up a little bit? Because I'm a very tidy person. I had a bucket and water and soap out there today scrubbing everything down. I don't need it cleaned. I need it fixed. So for me, that, those are sometimes two different things. I don't need my carpets washed. I need them replaced.
Placed for sure.
You know?
They're past different.
Yeah.
What we're discussing is a maintenance project where we would come in and we would pull up, we'd remove everything from the bungalows. We'd pull up the carpet. We'd replace the plywood in any place particular, you know, either fully replaced or if it's not particularly, some places are more squishy than others. So we'd replace the plywood. We'd work underneath it. And then we would put plywood back. We'd put new flooring in. At that time, we, we can fix cabinetry and other things that need to be fixed or replaced as needed. We can, well, your HVAC units are relatively new, but we might, we definitely need to take a look at the ducting and make sure that the ducts get properly cleaned and the ones that have ducts.
Yes, please. Yes.
Not all of them do. Though interestingly, EPA does not recommend duct cleaning, I heard today, which really surprised me. But I had a long talk with the, with our industrial hygienist about it. Interesting. But we, we will do that. And we will need to replace your ramps. And we will fix exterior areas that are wet, have water damage, need the skirts redone. And we, the walls are a little challenging. It's not like you can, the fabric or whatever that is on the walls.
It's like corkboard. It's like four walls of pinboard.
Right. But there's not much to do with them, but they also don't seem to be holding a, they're not the cloth ones that we sometimes see that hold an odor. So we're not sure. We might be able to steam clean those and that'd be the best way. We, that's, I mean, these are the things we're looking at and these are things we think we can achieve.
Maybe asking a slight.
Real quickly, can I, can I just real quickly, I've got Rachel appear on the screen that she's, I've unmuted her. Rachel, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I personally want to thank you guys for taking the time to do this meeting and call involving the communities. They think it's really important for our new voices to be heard. I just, if you're looking for opinions and questions of what the communities want, my vote would be change the bungalows out as quickly as possible. I don't want this to be a project where it's getting pushed off again and again and again. So the faster we can do it, the better it is. That's just kind of my two cents on it. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I can just hearing what you said and, and kind of pivoting off that. Like, how would you compare a refurbish to a new module? Like, just everything you listed. If you were to walk in on a refurbish and you walk in on a new, I mean, how do they compare? Because I think that would help in the decision-making, right?
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, how, how do we think about that?
As much as I know, when they take them back to the factory, certainly where any wood that is rotted and, you know, so when they take them back to the factory, now you don't have the ceilings or the floors. You just have, I mean, you have the plywood floors. You don't have flooring. You know, you have the walls, you have the windows. But when they have that, they can go and restructure and make sure that the structure is good. Make sure that all the wood is, is, is clear. We can do a lot of that work. And when we pull the plywood, we can check the structure underneath them. If there are any, you know, structural beams that need to be replaced, we can most likely replace those. We've certainly done similar work on bungalows before. So it'd be very similar. It might not be as comprehensive, only because it's easier to do that work when they're in pieces than it is when they're still standing.
And just to clarify, the new modules are not actually new. They're new earth.
They would either be, they'd be somewhere between new and refurbished and they could be as old as the ones we have that refurbished. But someplace in that spectrum, we can't say exactly how old they are. But they would have been refurbished at the factory or they would be potentially new.
Can you get that information before the community makes a decision? Because if we're switching out sort of gnarly 35-year-old bungalows or other gnarly 35-year-old bungalows, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. Is there a way for the district to get that information before the community has input, et cetera? Because it doesn't make a lot of sense to make a decision with incomplete information, which could be potentially very significant in terms of what we're doing. Because I don't feel that it makes sense to wait to get a sort of refurbished 35-year-old bungalow. If you guys can just come in and actually make a difference this summer.
It's gonna, it's gonna depend, yes.
I don't think you'll be able to tell the difference between a refurbished and a new portable unless you're like a expert. It's gonna, it's gonna look a little bit.
Could you be able to tell the difference between, it's a SMO USC refurbished? Since it's not technically going back to the factory and a new one?
Yes, you would.
Okay.
The only advantage of, of refurbishing in place is you don't have to go through the DSA. So they can start it almost, you know, right away. Perhaps get most of it, not all of it done, before September or August when it come back.
So I think we would notice the difference if we did it?
I think you would notice the difference if you did, mainly because
Like refurbished on site.
You're all portable, for sure, yeah.
Refurbished on site versus factory refurbished. I would think a factory refurbished would be better and like more comprehensive, but whoever said that?
So it's not really replacing gnarly or gnarly. It's, but you've heard, factory refurbished is essentially.
Okay. Let me do one thing that I didn't do, just to say, this is Jim Pavarro, who's our, who's our architect. And then in front of us, Kevin Klein, our deputy bond program manager. And then Michael Burke, who is our design manager. And over there is Steve Masetti, who is our bond program manager. Just so you know who these voices are that I'm looking at constantly to get feedback on what we're, what I'm saying. What would be helpful tonight would be to get a direction. If we have a sense of where you all want to go and which one of these choices or how you want to go, having a direction then allows us to go to the company and really say, we want them at this point and then we can get more feedback and we can share that feedback through Christian to you. That's where, that's what we help. I mean, if you want to, we can go and say, you know, it's just, it helps us to be able to say, we want these now and this is what we, and what can we get if we want them at this particular moment? That helps as far as getting an answer. Yes.
Is there, really we can't just get new and then if not, is there some kind of warranty or certification that they provide?
No, the only reason.
Because we're just kind of.
It's a matter of time for us. If you want new, we have to go through the regulatory process. Drags it out. It's if you want it sooner the better.
This is a repair.
Either repaired in place or there's some combination, options two and three, where you can get four done over the counter quickly and cranking through the six-month process. But you go down there and you say, can we put these four new portables on there? They check it out over the counter and say, yes, should be.
You see, these portables, they're called PCs. They're, they're all, they're made in the factory under strict regulations, welding requirements, inspections. So once you have a, a portable in place, they're all the same. They're just modules, basically. And, you know, the, the DSA is happy with, say, okay, as long as they're pre-approved. There are maybe 20 or 30 pre-approved in the state of California. They're happy with just saying, okay, they're all, they're all the same. So they all go through the same standard. So whether they're new or, or, or old, the welding still is intact. They're not junk. They're still legitimate, strong units that pass a lot of safety tests. So.
Do we know whether our current buildings pass those safety tests? Like, if we have structural engineers in there because they're so old and the walls are warped and the roofs are falling apart? Do we, are we confident that if we refurbish these things, we don't have structural safety problems in there that we might not have if we got the refurbished ones? Like, what kind of, what kind of, I mean, room 71 aside with the paint on the tiles and all of that mess? How confident are we that, aside from having done mold testing, that these things are structurally sound, otherwise safe, et cetera, as compared to a new bungalow?
They are safe. The issue is that code changes every three years. So all of these buildings, for example, are safe. They're just not up to current codes. So if you were to touch them, you have to go through the DSA. They need to bring it up to current code. The option where you're just adding maintenance and operations and refurbish them in place, they're not going through the DSA. So they wouldn't require you bring them up to current code, but they are safe.
Sorry, could you just answer my question about warranty? Like, are they warranted for a certain amount of time?
That's beyond my.
Yeah, I don't, I've never heard of a warranty for a portable. I'd check on that. I don't really know. Either they're around or they're gone.
I mean, I mean, these ones, these ones, we would be leasing. You know, so we own these lovely ones out here. We would be leasing them and there is a lease payment. But that's the right way to go. To buy new ones, not only would they be more expensive, the waitlist on that's over a year.
Well, also leasing new ones, the waitlist is very long. So somebody asked a question about why not get new? I think, Michael, and correct me if I'm wrong, new is not available.
Yeah, you have to understand.
Even for lease.
A few weeks ago and they sent me a proposal, they sent me an example of one district getting, I think it was 80, you know, for next summer. And that's just one district. I think it was for most of each. And this is the entire state. And one of the companies that makes portables recently went out of business. So there's even less available. So the ability to get a new one versus a used one isn't really the point. It's like, can we find any of them? And of course, that's our, our issue. So you were saying, can you, can you find the ones that we want, the best one? I don't know. We'll call, we'll call companies and say, what do you have? And that's pretty much how it's going to work.
But it is the point for fall. For when we put something, putting something in this fall, they're gonna be refurbished.
Yeah.
They're not gonna be new because new's not available right now.
Thank you.
Yes.
I, I think there's a couple of.
Can I just?
Here, yeah, no, thank you. There's, and I'm confusing the timelines, if you, you know, but we can, we can get to that. But there, I think that to me, there's the issue of the actual building, right? Unless we're placing the bungalows. But then there's also the issue of timing, right? Which I don't think anybody here has talked about. So I would kind of look at the teachers and like the impact on the students of what having construction in the fall and those classes being displaced is going to do to the teachers and the students in that class. I happen to represent all the students, but I also happen to have an incoming third grader, as do, you know, many, you know, parents in here or current third graders. But, you know, if, if the kids, when we're saying fall, if the kids and the teachers are displaced for August, September, October, November, right? Like, that's, I think, a really big point of conversation that we just haven't talked about. So if you could review the timelines, just so we understand, like, what work exactly is going to be done? When, if we go with this potentially less expensive, easier option, like, will it be guaranteed that the students will come in, the teachers won't have to move? They'll have this like safer place? Or, you know, if it's not, if that's going to go into the fall anyways and there's going to be displacement of teachers and kids and potentially, you know, playground access, whatever that might be? Then I think we need to look at what that does to our students for next year.
So the refurbished plan, the goal would be to get it done in the summer. I wouldn't stand here and guarantee that we'd finish it in the summer, but I would say we'd finish it August, early September. And the question, part of the question is, do we do two at a time, then two at a time? Or do we all do all four at a time? That's gonna depend on, no, but it's gonna depend on looking at Christian and you all, who gets displaced. Now, we've put in portable, we've taken out, I mean, we've put in portables, you know, over a summer, which means we've achieved it in a 10-week period in the past. So if there's not a lot of site work to be done once we remove them, then the maximum time would be somewhere in the two months to two and, two and a half month. So if we could begin it in late August or September, then you're talking about September, October, and maybe by November you're moving in. So that's, these are the types of timing, you know, timing schedule we're working with. But to your earliest question where you ask about how the teachers feel about that impact of being displaced during the fall. Christian and the teachers, what would you say there?
I would say, I thank you for sharing that. In fact, I'll stand. I, I've been thinking about these options and you, I think the numbers were changed from the, what the communication we sent out. So I'll talk, I'll talk about the numbers tonight, the ones that you just said in order. So.
Right. When we talked originally, we thought we could do all six as quickly as possible.
The option numbers, when we sent out the first communication, it was like, here's option one, here's option two, here's option three. But the option numbers have changed tonight. But don't worry about it. It's all good. It's, it's the meat of the project, right? We'll talk about that. So in option two, which is the most intriguing to me, and I think it satisfies a lot of our needs right now, which is to remove the worst bungalows as soon as possible and to bring in and to refurbish two of the best bungalows, the ones that are not leaking. Maybe they have some cosmetic stuff on the side. The siding is sort of ripping off like in 75 Ms. Martinez's room. I know that stuff can be repaired. That's not terribly structurally, you know, it doesn't affect much. I would say that option two that you presented tonight, which is bring in the four refurbished, whatever they are. I have to believe, honestly, it's easy to be skeptical, but I can't believe that there's a company out there that has 35-year-old bungalows that are gonna bring those to us. So I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have a little more faith that.
That would be sublime.
That they're not gonna be, and either way, Jim says that they're refurbished and they're gonna be guaranteed that they're refurbished and all that stuff and that they're, you know, and Michael says that there are standards to it. So I, I have to, I have to listen to the experts on this stuff. That said, I think that, that removing the worst of the bungalows as soon as possible is a good option. I do. And I think when it comes down to organization and plus bringing in the library bungalow too, I've been thinking about what do you do with that, that structure? That becomes a specialist place. It becomes art. It becomes music. It becomes science. It becomes all these other things because it's big. It's this big, right? Maybe a little smaller, but it, it's, it's large and that's not a classroom, okay? That's not an efficient use of a large bungalow. So that becomes a specialist space. Some rooms over here, like room 46, since these projects are shelved for a little while until the new bond goes through and it's kicked down the road a little bit. This stuff stays intact, which means we have space. It means that Rachel Mock stays right here in this room in the computer lab, which she loves.
I love that place.
I'm gonna have to drag her out of that room.
I would transition because it's just healthier and safer and it feels good.
It's a good room. It's a great room with high ceiling. Very nice. Good, lots of light. Yeah, right? Jinx. So, so we, I think what we could do is.
You're gonna love the new building.
We could, yeah, you're gonna love the new building. I think, I think as far as like moving people around, to your point, Samantha, I think that we can move people around. We're going down a class this year, which means we're gonna have another classroom open, okay? That happens. We go up and we go down over the years. We're gonna go down a classroom. So we'll have that space available to move somebody into that room. We have other alternatives. We've got room 46 right here, which could be a classroom. In which case we would take the specials like art and all those things. Art can travel. Art used to travel, Ms. Fano, yes?
Yeah.
Cards turned ten years.
Music used to travel, right? The upper grade music, third through fifth grade music. We, we actually had them travel this year because we were short on something and we had to have them go in to the classrooms. What's that?
Traveled at Roosevelt. Art was brought to the classroom at Roosevelt.
That's right. It's, it's, it's a thing that normally happens. We're just spoilt, we've been spoiled, okay? We'd love that. I love, actually, I love specialist space, art rooms and science rooms and all that other stuff. Right now, we're kind of, you know, we have to, you know, prioritize what, what are our needs here? Our needs and our wants, the community has spoken. And I agree, we need to get rid of the, the worst of those bungalows. We need to bring something else in. Because remember, those are gonna be here the next four years until that classroom building is completed. So let's bring them in. Fall, we'll make it work. We can dance. We know how to like move things around.
Very efficient. We got that moving down.
You've been in three classrooms this year, Rachel Mock, right?
And those wheelie chairs that they bought us and desks, it was very helpful in moving. Just wanted to know. I was like, wow, thank you for those wheels.
I'll say this, do you remember? And, and you know, community, community, we're gonna rely on you to help us move and do things, right?
We asked for it.
I am deadly serious. When Ms. Martinez's bungalow, room, Mr. Wheeler's now, room 73 flooded, I'll tell you a quick story. Sorry, I don't want to take all the time. I know you're running tape. We had a long-term stuff because Ms. Martinez was on maternity leave and she came in on Monday. Cheryl McNamara, remember? And she came in and she turned, put the key in and she opened up the door and it was like a cartoon. The water was up to here and it came flooding out, right? They completely gutted it and re, re, redid the floors and the walls and did everything. They made it. They made it, you know, livable, and actually, that's the nicest bungalow we've got right now, but... But, uh, all that to say is, parents came down that morning, right? We took pictures of the room, we actually moved Ms. Martinez's room to seventy-five, we put everything on the wall exactly like it was in seventy-three. We were able to move. We can, what's the state, we can do hard things, right? We can do hard things. If it, if it's option number two tonight, it was something else, and there's options up the other way.
Which option was that?
Option two was the one where we swap them out in the fall.
That, yeah, the four, and then the library bungalow, and then the refurbish of the two.
It's the same, it's option two here as well.
Yeah, yeah, we sent, I didn't wanna confuse, because we sent out a communication
Oh, that, that.
Uh, earlier that had the options in a different, uh, they were a little bit of a number different order. But I, I am in favor, right this moment, in having thought this through for a little bit of time now, this, this stuff keeps me up at night, um, of replacing those four as soon as possible and refurbishing the two best bungalows as soon as possible. Um, and I think those will be livable enough, those are the best ones. And then bring in the library, and then we move on with our lives, okay? That, that's what I think. And then we get to designing with Jim and his team on the classroom building, which is exciting, if you haven't seen the designs. I mean, this campus is gonna be amazing looking, no glass walls, so. No, I'm just kidding.
The disruption, you feel like that's manageable? Like, that's, to me, is the question, like...
I do, 'cause we just did it this year. We did it with Ms. Mock and Ms. Doan's class, um, we moved them, and the kids, they're resilient. Um, they help, you make it a project, you know, they're, they're involved in their space. So, I do think that we can make a move. Here's the thing, that we'll do pre-planning. If this, if the board decides to choose this option, let's say, if the board chooses that, we're gonna jump into action right away, and I'm gonna get the teachers together, and I may call on a couple of parents with some expertise in certain things. And we're gonna sit down and we're gonna start saying, where are people going? What are we gonna do? We got four, four spaces that are gonna be disrupted. Whether they do two at a time, that's even easier, right? That's only two classes we have to move around, that's easy, we can do that. I won't even, that's one meeting, okay? We, we will assign this class to that class, and they'll start the year there. So, they won't have to move like it, when, once school starts. They'll already be where they're gonna be temporarily, and then they'll move into the new unit.
And to be clear, six only, we're only solving for five though next year.
We'll, we'll be solving for...
Because we're down a classroom.
We'll be solving for six. So, here, here's the thing, so, replacing four, refurbishing two, I'm thinking of the structures, even if they're classrooms or specialist spaces, I have to think of them as spaces, because we have after-school programs, before care, we've got all kinds of things that, that I have to think about and to house. So, I, I want them all to be livable.
Sorry, I just wanna make sure, though, just my, my math in my head. We have six bungalows that are being used for classes.
We have six bungalows that are being used for classes, gen ed classes, and then also special education classroom, yeah.
Got it, but that six is staying as six, not turning up? I heard, I thought I heard you say we're down a class, so maybe we're down...
But what I mean is, is that our enrollment is down, just a, just enough for us to lose a teacher, basically. But that's, that solves this, everybody got pink slips, so, nobody's okay, but... Um, but we're gonna be down one, one teacher, so one class. That's what I mean by we're down a class, which, which, which opens up a room, right? 'Cause those, there'll be no teacher there. But there will be a teacher there, because we're gonna move somebody from bungalow.
Um, as the resident dinosaur, I don't know how long he's been here, Mary, but I was here for the original, yes, was it in nine, year ninety-one? When I was starting my career. And, um, we were getting kicked around and moved. All the construction was happening while we were teaching. We weren't even given choices by our admin, or, I mean, we were just, some of us had to go work in the auditorium that they divvied it up. Some of us were, were moved into some really bad bungalows that had no water. It was, it was manageable. We, we rebuilt the school while we were teaching in it. So, this is, this is doable, this is, this is something we can do. It's, 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 it's going to be disruptive, but it's doable. And my colleagues are amazing, they can teach anywhere, in Treehouse, anywhere. But I'm just saying, I was here for that huge, for that GGS. It was doable. It was ugly and we complained and it was hard, especially if you go to a teaching auditorium with two other classes, they had like a hundred kids in there. But it was doable. And it got done, and it got done fast that way, because we never stopped teaching and the construction never stopped going. It was going at all hours. It was just a difficult year.
I, I've been a principal, or, or in a system of schools that were under construction, and it is doable, safe, you're working, right? And, uh, and this is, this isn't even as big as a big construction project, as Christina was saying that I had earlier. This is not, this is not a big project. When it comes to playground being closed, I was talking to the teachers over here, if it's two, two to three days, a couple a few times during that period of time, that's workable. You know what you do, you do a field trip to Clover. You know, it's like, we're, we're, we're teachers, we make it work. So, um, I'm not worried about all of that stuff, because that's, that's small. And we'll figure all that out, all those sort of like details that we'll figure out. The big thing that we have to decide is which of these are we gonna do, right?
Okay, two clarification. You're recommending this option of working this, starting this fall. Is that now with that, hold us off for the four years you're saying till the new bungalow? So, there's no additional work that would be done in a year when your portables are there? That's, this would be it?
I, I mean, that would be up to them. If they wanted to come in and, and replace the other two that they refurbished and stuff, you know, I'll take a new bungalow, of course, you know, if that's something that they wanna do. The baseline, the base of this, of this option for me is workable, if they leave the two best bungalows and they refurbish them. That, to me, is workable.
To clarify, Christian, in this scheme, um, the goal is to bring in the library bungalow.
Yeah.
Replace that, the bungalows, and there's only one left.
That's not what I heard in the option, but is that what I'm hearing right now? Is it, it's only gonna be five, yeah, I can see that part. Um, five, five smaller bungalows and the one large bungalows, I was just saying? Not six of the bunk, small bungalows and the library?
There would be four new classroom bungalows.
Yeah.
Refurbished new, there'll be one, there'll be the one library.
Yeah.
Uh, portable, slightly bigger portable. And then one of the original six would be left and refurbished.
Okay, I didn't understand that. I, I thought that it was the two, replace four, leave the two of the best ones, and still bring in the library.
We could have seven, I suppose, if you want.
That would've been seven, yeah. But, but that one's gonna be a temporary library, so that's why I'm thinking...
Well, you need a temporary library, yeah.
How many, but how many do you need? Not for a year or two, right?
Yeah, but still, there's, there's still a box, there's still a box. How many do you need between twenty-four, twenty-five when the library's being done? You need six plus one more.
We want a horde new bungalows.
No, I, I, no, I'm being serious. I do, I want all of them, because this campus is a practice with child care, we're turning them away. It all is, we, we're a busy campus, we're one of the largest campuses here in this district. We have, uh, we're the third largest as far as students go, and not even by a lot, right? So, again, I'm giving you my input, I would like them all, I would like the six small and the library one. If it's determined that, you know, the facilities and the board and everything, that it's five and the library, we go with that, we make it work, but that's what I want. But I'm just one person.
And it's second one to follow up with something earlier. If I'm understanding correctly, you were talking about not starting till the fall, and was not starting till the fall due to scheduling of the board and scheduling with the, the...
It's the whole process.
Okay, so, based upon this crazy winter that we had, nobody, it was fully unexpected, can that, the, the money part of it and, and the contractor or whomever it was, can't that be expedited? Can the board have a special meeting via Zoom from their qualifications in July?
You go to the office?
But I mean that very honestly, that I don't think that we should all be on hiatus, because normally the board doesn't meet. I feel like this is an extreme circumstance that could, that's my proposal too, that we get things...
Yeah, that's a question for them, for sure, yeah.
There's one more thing I think we also understand, is that this summer, the work is occurring at other campuses that have been planning these things for probably a year or two. They're busy working on those campuses, 'cause it's summertime, the only time you can really do this work is summertime. So, if, even if we have the best luck in the world and our portables ready for us in June, they can't put them here, 'cause they're busy putting them everywhere else with people who've been designing them for two years. So, the reason we're, we're looking at fall is because they could actually help us in the fall, when everything else is done, 'cause no one puts them in the fall, because it's too busy. So, we'll, we'll be getting that, that when they're done with hundreds of unders this summer, the people who planned, you know, earlier, we could have better chance.
It's earlier, is it earlier than yours or is it need things, like, right? Like, do these campuses have a plan earlier?
No, no, these aren't, but these aren't our...
No one does this fast, it takes a long time.
But my question is, do they need it as much or more than we do?
These aren't our campuses, these are other school districts. We're not doing this on any campus this summer.
You're not?
When he's saying it's happening, he's talking about the, the vendors that are providing the, the portables, they're super busy putting in other campuses. And so, we're, we're at the back of that line, because they've been planning it, because they need it for TK and K, TK, not K. Uh, and we're coming in now saying, oh, we really need them this summer, and they're like, yeah, sorry, it's not here. So, it isn't about us having priorities that are elsewhere, it's about availability. It's also really not very much about board, uh, meetings. I mean, the board is gonna approve this when we bring it to them. This is, again, it's about availability of portables and installation. We do have to go through a process, the public bidding process, we can't shortcut that, uh, because it's the law. But, um, but we can absolutely expedite to do, to do it in the, this is gonna sound like I'm trying to shortcut it, to do it in the minimum time that it's gonna take, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And that, and it is a high priority for our department, we're gonna keep trucking forward on whatever the decision is, that's the direction we go, and we'll go full steam ahead.
But we, you know, we have, we have a hundred things or more that we have to, you know, to do and boxes to check and things that have to be done, and it, it's, it's, it's not a simple process. It's a lot of stuff that has to get done for us to make a fall.
Can, can, I'm gonna, can we take your question, but real quickly, right before we take your question, I'd like to hear from the teachers, because I, I work with the teachers, I lead the school, but I don't lead their minds, you know what I mean? I wanna hear what they have to think, and they may have something different or, or something about that. But let's have your question first, and then...
What is the probability of these four replacement bungalows being successfully installed prior to another rainy season for next winter? And if not, what would be the contingency?
I know you're looking at him now.
We have a, no, we, we, I think we have a high potential of doing it before the next rainy season. Um, the existing bungalows are getting their roofs fixed tomorrow, so that's what that is. Uh, we are expecting, they are forecasting an rainy year, so we expect another good year of rain, but we know that, so, but we do think we have a high probability of getting them. Unless the rains come in September, and we've had such weird weather, who knows? I mean, you know, if they come in November, like December, would we usually expect them?
But you have a crystal ball, right?
Oh, yeah, my crystal ball is really clear.
Carrie, just real quickly, we have a very specific thing I wanna make sure that, that we address real quickly. Room twenty-six's roof is going to be fixed, yes?
Is that happening tomorrow?
Room twenty-six.
Okay.
It has a huge hole with asbestos tiles on it.
No, it definitely is on the schedule. What I heard was that I think they were here today, or were they here...
I, I don't know, I was on the record.
Sometime this week, they're working on the, uh, uh, the modulars.
Eighties.
And then this week, they're supposed to come work on the seventies.
I just wanna go on the record that room twenty-six has had a hole in the ceiling for many, many, many years, and I expect it to be fixed before fall for entering kindergarteners to not have asbestos tiles falling on their heads. All amongst it. Good night, all.
You can hang out.
If you start pulling things up, what you're gonna find, and I'm afraid if we don't go with that idea of replacing them and we say we're gonna refurbish them, I think we're gonna have bigger problems when things start coming up. Um, just because you can't see it doesn't mean it's not there. And I think there's a lot of critters living amongst those weeds, there are a lot of holes down there. There's, I think, yeah, so, get them out, get us all out, then get us all back in.
So, that sounded like, sorta like, option two.
Two, two, yeah, like, yeah.
Up to two, but all four at the same time.
All four at the same, just, just...
As opposed to two at a time.
Gangbusters, just, yeah, rip the Band-Aid off, go for it.
Thank you, Heather. Vivian, do you, um, do you have any feelings about it? I mean, not that you have feelings, you don't have to share them, no.
No, I do, I do echo Heather's side of the...
Any other, um, staff in the room that wants to, Christina?
I have a question, what, all the incoming TKs, are we getting any new TKs next year?
We're at two TKs still for next year, and they're gonna stay where they're at right now, which is on the TK.
So, we're not getting any more than we have?
Nope.
Okay, just two.
Just the two right now, yeah, for this year.
So, we don't have to worry about...
No.
Okay, that was...
No, we were the first to expand because of the, uh, it's because of the whole jams, pathway, mirror thing that happened, and so we took on the, the extra TK this year, just FYI.
You'll probably get a third one next year, I mean, the next...
Not this, not having the one.
I, I, 'cause I heard, I heard rumbling that we were gonna get a third one, and where we'd be with that.
Not, not twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, great.
Before we're really ready for you, you'll probably get another one.
Okay.
Joe?
Third grade, you're saying, will have three classes you're projecting?
No, no, uh, so, I'm still working it right now. It's like, it's all fresh and new, every day is like a new thing with enrollment. Um, we're, we're really looking at like a, we're really looking at this, two TK, three K, three firsts, three second, three third, one, two, three, not one, two, three, sorry, one, two, three combo.
Oh.
Multi-age class is what we call it. Um, three fours, three fives, and one, uh, four, five, multi-age combo.
What a three, four.
Verbality in my head.
Three, five.
Say that again, please.
One, four, five combo.
So, two combo classes, one's gonna be a two, three, probably, and one's gonna be a four, five, and then there's gonna be three in every grade level.
And so, are there, um, brick and, lack of, you know, brick and mortar rooms for those teachers? For those classes?
Yes.
And in specialty, we're working through where they, yeah, in heart?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna be fine, um, with that, because if, whenever you go down a class or a teacher, I hate to say a teacher, but anytime you go down a teacher, um, you have a class, right? You have a, a room, so, we have, we have a room down there. So, but we'll, you know, we'll sit down as a team, we'll map out like where will people go? Most people aren't gonna be displaced at all, so, right? Most people are just gonna stay in their classroom that they're in right now. Some people will have to move around, someone's gonna have to take a, well, I'm not gonna get into all the staff, etc. But, um, but that's basically the structure as of today. Anything happen? You have friends in the neighborhood who haven't registered yet? Get them to register, you know, and, and bring our numbers up. Um, you know, and then we don't have to do combo classes and things like that. But the district for so long has not pink slip teachers in our elementary schools, and, you know, we're a little out of whack here and there, you know, with the numbers and then all that stuff according to their, um, their formulas, so, that's what's happening. Okay, any questions for me?
My teacher wants to say something.
We have, yeah.
Oh, okay, so, sorry.
Mr. Wheeler.
Cynthia, we'll catch you after the-
Yeah, Mr. Wheeler, who is one of the teachers in, in the bungalows.
Daniel?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I was kicking my daughter out of the room. Oh, I, I just, no, I felt, felt the peer pressure for me to speak up, so I'm supporting option two. I also, my concern is if there's construction going on while we're teaching or even around, having experienced it at Muri, just with painting and they were doing some other repairs, it became, it, it, it kind of just, um, they were trying to do it simultaneously and work around and it did become a, a burden on, a distraction for the kids. So I think it's option two, I'm not looking at anything right now, but I figured I'd go full war and let's, um, let's not like try to patchwork and Band-Aid up a few little bungalows just to, um, try to survive a year or something like that. I think we need to really push forward and, and so I think that's option two. I'm not looking at, is that what I'm looking at right now?
Option two with all four going at the same time.
The four going away and, and then depending on what Jim and I are talking about here, whether it's one or two of the best bungalows are stayed and then bringing the library bungalow as well, the large one. And then just whether they do all two at once, or, I'm sorry, all four at once or two, two at a time, that's option two.
Yeah, that's, and I, that, but the only thing I'm concerned about is how construction might impact the granite site, everybody, not just the teachers who are displaced temporarily or, but making sure that the construction crew is, is really mindful and, and good about understanding that we're a, an institution for learning, that that's our priority, so.
Yeah, good point, you know, that's a very valid concern and, and having been on campuses that have construction like you have, you know it can get noisy.
Yeah.
This construction's not gonna be that long or the, you know, the removal and, and the replacement isn't gonna be that long in the grand scheme of it, but I have to believe in the facilities, people can chime in. They're gonna put up the fencing and they're going to, sorry, they're gonna put up the fencing to keep kids away and all that stuff. And the good news is that we have the HVAC system now, so the doors can be closed and the windows can be closed and they have filtered air and all that stuff. Whereas like just a year ago when we didn't have it, they had to have the doors open and it was loud all the time, just from playground noise, so, right, that's a good point though, Daniel.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I guess I just had two points. I think the first point is, um, just that, but option two right now, where we're losing a classroom, I think that's unacceptable. I think depending on, you know, what's happening, um, we're gonna have this library, it's gonna be essentially a space that's not usable and if we're not getting another classroom and essentially saying the library's gonna replace that classroom, I think that would be unacceptable. We're losing classroom space. And as somebody who used to work at operations, you don't lose classroom space and that. We, I think we really need to have all six of those bungalows replaced. Um, and second of all, for the refurbishing of the best bungalows, that will happen during the summer, right? It's not gonna be happening during replacement, is that?
Yes, yes, the summertime, that's when we could really, you know, do most of that work.
So the two that are the best ones that we have, we're gonna get refurbished this summer, so that work won't be happening the same time the replacements happening.
Replacement work will faster and, you know, the, the lifting place will fit down, of course, and stuff and other things. But, no, and that is noisy and destructive as a real construction budget or building up the ground at all. It's faster and a little more, a lot of the work interior, work fits down when they're inside doing the connections, smart boards, so it's a little quieter in terms of an overall project.
But I think you- Correct me if I'm wrong, the, oh, sorry, Steve.
Just gonna, I think, I was just gonna clarify the, your question isn't about what are we doing with the four we bring in, it's the two that are remaining and, you know, I think your question was, are you, are we going to be doing it at the same time as we replace those four or are we going to do it before?
That's cool, so I guess it's both. So, so under option two, we're gonna have six classrooms. So two of the best ones we have today will be refurbished by the district during the summer.
That's the plan.
And then the other four will be replaced during the fall.
That's right.
And in the future, two more new ones, the refurbished ones we bought in the spring, the summer of twenty-four.
At this point, that wouldn't be the, that's not this plan. This plan is, we're gonna live with four replacement and two refurbished until we get through construction in twenty-seven, is that right?
Assuming we get the bond money.
Assuming that, yes, assuming the bond passes. So it's, it was, there was no second step of replacing the other two in this plan.
The, the six is all in twenty-four.
Six would have to wait till twenty-four, that's right.
And just, uh, somebody, one of the team members, Michael maybe, um, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I heard from you, Carrie, is that, that you would like them, you would like the two bungalows that are going to remain to be next to, actually, that'd be an amazing classroom, right? Um, move all that out, that's like art and music right now, make them travel like they used to do and they do in other places, uh, for the duration and then, um, and then they can work on those bungalows, yeah. That's the idea, is to find those spaces, so I can identify one, two. Depending on what we do with the front building here, like rooms two through four, uh, which is mostly childcare, there's some special education in there, um, for half the day. We'll just have a look at all that, but I think that we can house most of them, we'll have to see. But, but I don't wanna make a commitment right here because I really don't look at the map, but what do we have?
It seems like that would be nice to be part of the option. I think like that, in my opinion, changes things for the map a little bit. If like we know that all kids are gonna be in kind of a structure to start the year and have that consistency, I think that'd be nice to be part of the option.
I think so too, I mean, ideally, if we could get all the kids just out of that space into other spaces at the start of the year, that, ideally, that would be a solution. Again, we have to look at the maps, we have to look at like the classes and figure out where does everybody go? In my head, I see it, but I, I, I don't wanna make a commitment right here because I just really, we, I think we have to get together and nail that down.
But it might be, it might be possible, there's some, there's some things we can do because we've already started using the computer lab as a classroom, that used to not be a classroom. So that's one of the four, uh, cause right now, out of those six, four of them are full classrooms, right? There's one of them, well, there's five, but one of them is not gonna be because we're gonna lose a, a grade. So we have four that we need to put somewhere, we've already put one here. We have an art room that we maybe can talk about moving art. So I, there's possibilities that we have to, but we have to talk because we're getting new information, um, daily. You just got information about how many classes we're gonna have next year. So that will depend on the spaces, but it's possible.
So there is a chance though that a class, that's a classroom, will be in the summer refurbished classroom, like two of the best ones, will one have to be there while the other bungalows are being moved?
That's a great question and I would wanna know from the facilities team about how noisy it would be for them if they're over there, how, you know, what it would look like, like safe passage, for lack of a better term, how they get around campus? Uh, if things are fenced off and all of that stuff. So I know they can figure all this out, uh, it would just come down to planning it. If it's okay, like, you know, if they tell, say it's okay that kids are in room seventy-five on the end there or whatever, then if we can do that, then yeah, why not use that space if it's refurbished, right? Seventy-four, seventy-five, whatever it is, why not use the space if we can use the space? And maybe it's a case where they're displaced for a very short period of time, they're in there, but then like, I don't know, I heard it takes how long to like move them out, scrape the land and read Swericoat or whatever it's called.
Yeah, two or three days, we're moving things and the playground's closed for, for movement, we might wanna not have kids trying to get to the bungalows every month.
Yeah, we'll send them to science. No, I'm kidding, it's late. Um, so, yeah, the, the deal is if you can get them all out of there, but if it's safe, if there is a way to do this summer, then, and the team, you know, the facilities team, you know, architects and everybody says it's safe to do that, then why wouldn't we use the refurbished spaces for that time? Um, so we'll just have to wait, there's, there's unknowns, I guess, so they can weigh in. We wanna do what's like the safest for everybody, where in most, the least is our, for that, so. I, you know, I have to imagine that we'll keep you in the loop all the way through, um, even in the summertime when we have updates, I don't, I don't wanna take three weeks off, so I won't send you anything then, but like, awesome, where I could send you stuff, you know? I don't know, deal with that, in Bahamas, somewhere in the Bahamas, Alicia. Um, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, I, I just wanna make sure that I understand and I understood the point if true. So if we do that with the replacement of the bungalows, um, four and two, um, the classroom building all hinges on whether this next bond passes.
Yes.
And if it does not, then those bungalows are there again indefinitely, kind of thing, right, correct?
Yes.
So it's really important that this next bond passes for us to get, regardless, for us to get that classroom built.
But there's been a lot of elementary and school projects.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, then you better replace all six.
Yeah, and if it doesn't, then we wanna have good bungalows, just in case.
Do the budgets for building ever come from anything other than a bond measure?
Yes, but not substantially. I mean, we get, every chance we do, we put in for what state grants we can get and with even your modernization project, we got some money back, but it's a couple million dollars, you know, and we're talking about, you know, the new building being a thirty million dollar building. So it's, it rarely comes from any place other than-
It just seems like where, there's no end of bond measure. Like, like he'll, like, it's every cycle, so every two years, it's the college, it's the district, it's the college, it's the district, and so I just wonder like-
You should live in LA like me, every cycle.
Yeah, and so it's just one of these things, like, is this just a plan for sustainability? It's like the, the taxpayers will just eat.
Okay, uh, it, it's not a great plan. Uh, the, okay, very, very quickly, the challenge in the district is that pretty much from nineteen seventy-eight when the Prop thirteen was passed until two thousand and six, while there was a measure ES and there were a few, this district spent very little to no money on our facilities. This district has, where the majority, I don't have the exact dates, I'm trying to get the exact dates, so I have to quote it exactly, where the majority of the schools in the state are less than forty years old. You know, the, the forty year is sort of the median age. The median age of most of the schools in our district is sixty because it all goes back to the nineteen thirty-three earthquake. Yes, we've had a number of bond measures and we're trying to like catch up with that. Uh, at the same time, Christian, myself, who lived in LA, uh, you pay half the taxes for your school than those of us who are in LA or people in Long Beach or in Beverly Hills on K-12 schools. That, uh, I mean, there's a calculation, I could say, but it's like, you know, on your assessed value, you pay one percent a year for your property taxes and then the bond measures are a percentage of that one percent. And Santa Monica, it's seven percent of your one percent that you pay for K-12 schools. And Los Angeles, where we live, it's thirteen percent. So yes, you are paying taxes and yes, you know, I would like to say there is an end. I think that with what we're looking at, where we are looking at, and we don't come, we don't come every two years, we come every six, we tend, we tend to come every six. And every six years, I do think, you know, we will be looking at doing a lot of work in six years and then looking at another one in six years from now. Because I think that to maintain our schools and a lot of old buildings and keep up with how education's changing, it is a factor.
Carrie, we have a question here, Val, and then we have Brittany online. Okay, Val, do you wanna go first or do you want Brittany to go?
I think my question sort of dovetails into the bond issue.
Go for it, yeah.
I feel like there's a lot of sort of distrust frankly, because we keep hearing bonds for the bungalows and the bungalows are still here. So what kind of structure and accountability is there gonna be to make sure that what we're talking about tonight actually happens? And that, you know, future bond funds, et cetera, are actually put towards what they sold to the voters as? You know, how are we as parents sitting here today, how are we supposed to know that, you know, we pick, say we picked Plan Two? What guarantee do we have that that's actually gonna happen? What sort of structural checks and balances and timelines, et cetera, are gonna be put in place so that we're not sitting here talking about room seventy-one, which was flooded when kids who are now in college were in that room? I mean, we are, we're literally dealing with a problem that's been going on for decades. What can we do to make sure that it actually gets fixed now?
As a district, we are better ready to go out for a bond than we ever have been. Uh, when we went out for measure ES, uh, which was the one that went out for in two thousand and twelve, we literally didn't have a project list. We had something we wanted to do, we had a big project at Sam O'Hair, nothing else.